I'll call to order an emergency meeting at 5:31 PM for stuff that's good at the work. Any council members have anything you can go to the board?
I do. We need to make our post office a more convenient vendor item. Losing yet another one staff member because they are overworked. They can't bring in staffing for it due to its classification and crossfire of the world. We've upgraded to each other level with one staff. There's the joint been in there, the power. Reporting machines fit just on whole big mess. So anything we can do to alleviate the problem in the valley of the office would be number one.
Yeah, so this is an issue we brought as well for the conference. So the thing of those grant possibility times. If we can continue to gather and then we can send off information every time we have something and make it formal. The more that they have in the in the hopper for issues where they're having this close up and some more traction they'll get on the half floor could it's enjoying.
Yeah, we need everybody lobby.
Yes. The other thing I would say is I don't remember twenty years ago, we had a couple of council members. Work with like eating with them and following up and following an actual issue more closely. And I know we can't take action on things like spending a committee or something like that within, you know, if not mentioned item. But if it's something that council is interested in following up in, we could put it on. You want to just kind of keep our eyes only and other than everything. Standing. Our congressional delegation was. And then.
Is it very early?
Yeah. It's just having a committee not actually show anything. It's actually giving them actual instances of what's going on and experiences. And getting constituents to fill out forms and also file books. Congress doesn't actually really control the post office. So that's another big challenge in that it's more like a plan or just a piece of provision. Their rate paid their salaries. And the appointments to leadership work on the presidential side with time now so we can. It's different. It can be, you know, you can be appointed by one president and not have the rate that the under president. It's very difficult to achieve this to that. But the more we can provide a congressional delegation, the more likely we can be. Many of the parts are very involved. Issues and for talent, there were things that was. Because it's not a dual thing. And I didn't necessarily make a committee just if there were a couple of council members who wanted to volunteer to do their own or something like that, we're even contract. Councilor Naflin, you have a question?
Yeah, I can't actually understand what what council member was saying.
She was saying there had been some staffing issues at the post office and talking about. And then the mayor was saying that you're advocating with our representatives to. Call that issue. Does that sum it up? Could you hear me okay?
Yeah, I wonder if it's when you talk towards the owl versus turn your head. I'm not sure. I couldn't understand anything. And then when the mayor was talking to, I was having trouble.
I have one quick thing. The cards for city hall that we got that are white and blank, I know that they have. I talked to the administrator about that. Some of them are getting printed on. And so our emergency manager reached out to me saying, oh, I heard you wanted to maybe. And I said, well, I want to see if the rescue council does, he was saying we could set up times to stop by, get our picture taken so that they all have the same. And then they could collect them all at a council meeting, take them, print them, and then give them back to us. So I just wanted to check that that is something everyone's interested in. Yeah, okay, so I'll kind of set that up in logistic wise. I think easiest would be like at the next meeting or that we get collect them all. And then people just need to stop by in the office and then you would get them all.
Um, I would suggest an easier approach, which is, I mean, we could invite them to a meeting.
Yeah.
And we could just have them take them here.
Yeah.
But collect your card.
Yeah, that'd be great. Okay, anything else? All right, so our first, oh, review of regular meeting agenda. I know was there anything on consent that anyone had any questions that would? That's all pretty. All right, so first, who won our first discussion item, which is our presentation on the American Rescue Plan Act funds with Director McMen.
Good evening. I'll give the presentation. Okay, so I am here to provide an update of where we are right now. Um, just to recap a few things, under the American Rescue Plan Act, the city of the wall was awarded. Two million, two fifty five, two fifty four from the US Treasury Department. The coronavirus state and local recovery fund. Funds were awarded as revenue loss due to COVID and public emergency. The award is to fund eligible COVID fund, sorry. There we go. The award is to fund eligible class before from March third, twenty twenty two to March third, first, twenty twenty four. Obligated funds at the end of twenty four that are in the critical or contract can be suspended through from thirty first to twenty twenty seven. We'll go ahead and. I'm sorry. Okay, so in twenty twenty one, plan for you to pay for past utility balances of reckons who are experienced economic hardship due to the COVID nineteen pandemic. And purchase COVID vaccine tests and PPE. Twenty twenty two actual expenditures, funds were used to purchase for the testing PPE. And sell electricity at Taylor landing to be used at urban markets and other community events. Purchase of lightning towers for community events, bleachers for community and foreign events, eight stories for the CPO, they did some rec and some arrangements of sleep. So there are the both of what actual actual was expended this year. Things that I think so. These are the approved budgeted ARPA funds in the twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four by noon. It's a kind of recap recap on what was set up for fresh and purposes. We have some support of some capital projects as well. We are going to. We are also approved in our budget to support for mid-term employees. Put it out there. Lady manager, queen, kitchen coordinator, repeat coordinator, and our community event coordinator. And then these are funds that will cover them through defining. We'll go ahead and go to the next. So then that brings us up to eight. So we have. A total twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four pre-funded for ARPA funds of two thousand. Two million, twenty five thousand, seven hundred and twenty six dollars. So actual twenty twenty three expenditures totaled five hundred and thirty two thousand, seven hundred and forty three. And if we can see these projects, which they did include. Finishing power at Taylor landing, like renovation, main original studies, pretty well flooring, the first center renovations, CPO renovations. And then we have project. We are at point B completed, minor rate major of twenty twenty four. City Hall site still been pre-defined, city hall window and HVAC. And then we will also have three hundred and forty thousand to support our Third Avenue Northeast Railroad and five blocks of property. Okay, so. Total board. To point to six five, two fifty four. We have spent two million, one thirty three, nine oh eight, which leaves us with an unused available balance of one thirty one, three fifty five, fifty four. This is based on what we've estimated is done for the remainder of this year. This is what is available. And we are proposing to be purposely funds to meet current needs in the finance department. We are proposing to use a portion of the available funds to support a financial budget analyst for a six month time period. This is the finance department in developing the open government budget and reporting module. This system is a very robust system that is not preset usable workflows or recording templates. We need to develop various financial data sets, design recording templates, and then bring them together to create financial dashboard. Recording and stories needed to clear the share financial information. Working in this system and developing dashboards and reporting tools that is filled up. The current finance team does not possess. The words are available time to devote to training. Once data sets are built and reports are designed, finance deck can be created, managed, and updated. Tools provide financial data and reports that are needed. The focus of the finance team is to accurate is on accurate reporting of financial activity in our general ledger, which takes a large effort. With the entire team working and collaborating together. Without accurate data reporting is meaningless. Meaningless. While staffed up time to managing financial data is crucial that we bring in an analyst. Still to develop reporting to allow us to bear the financial data and clear after warning. The finance department is also proposing to use a portion of the available funds to support additional modules in our UKG system. This is the system that we currently use for timekeeping and travel. The added functionality in UKG will enable us to automate core functions while providing a single database that stores and tracks employee information in one place. Adding automated workflows. Configurable forms and reports and real time access to accurate, consistent employee information. Will help us reduce administrative workflows, minimize compliance risk. Adding automation of salary and benefit tables will ensure accuracy and consistency by eliminating manual key and data. The additional functionality will allow us to better manage the challenges associated with payroll benefits and given reports. Administration providing transparent, streamlined, compliant processes to manage, train, and grow our people.
Yeah, but really quickly, before we get to questions, we did get a question from a council member in Athlin. If we could go back a couple of slides. I'm going to turn it over to Geraldine and Jeffy because he'll be best able to respond to the question from Athlin. Um, yeah, so there was a question on for some of these. Why did we not spend what was in the budget on some of these items? So specifically, being in Virginia. The RAC center renovations, the center renovations and depot. Yeah, depot renovation. So I'm going to turn it over to Geraldine and Jeffy to help explain why we have now one hundred and thirty one. Thousand dollars remaining in our budget, largely because some of the activities that were adopted. Either we didn't need all that we projected or we did it and it didn't cost as much as we.
Uh, good evening, Councilor Mayor, staff. No business. So, uh, third, yeah, report. And so the study on Maine and Virginia. So we did come to council last year August to share the expo, like report of options. If you recall, there was some, you know, manipulation of the block between Maine and Perth and Virginia. Rechanalizing and removing some of the hard features on Main Street. Working with the county and trying to reconfigure some of that activity on the bridge. The bridge one would be the easiest and super low cost. That's a time thing. Funds for that aren't really necessary. So in that sense, the main output of the project is a reconfiguration of the intertech and the around the bow. Obviously, we have no design. We're not moving forward. One hundred fifty thousand does not do anything. That is a massive project. We're going through our transportation improvement plan. Coupled with our confidence, so no big things are really recommended down. Really anywhere along that kind of corridor right now. So that one is done in the sense like. We looked at it. There are a few, you know, options. None of them are within the confines of that amount. But we kind of concluded it. That was one. Number two, rec center. So we had ten thousand set up. That was for painting exterior and interior, exterior painted. Interior is in great shape and making it skews currently for fat like it's capital fine. We put tubulars in there. We bought those all used for under five hundred bucks. So there really isn't another need there. The HVAC is probably one of the best functioning we have citywide. So aside from putting in a, you know, have to spend a few kind of rock about. That's just kind of not not needed. The depot. Painting had been completed. We talked about doing some other interior work. Without getting, because we're supposed to say involved and start peeling up laminate floor. I'm like, I don't know, with twenty thousand left, it's gonna be. Enough. Because once you start pulling up the floor, you're probably gonna have to set it back and look back and you're not gonna do some stuff that's more full scale rebuild. And again, it's okay for now. I think it probably deserves something and then work constraints. We have some work to get done. Putting this need ball on top of a spaghetti is gonna roll off, so that's. That's that one. And then visitor's center, the only left up wasn't conducted with some tech improvements and then HVAC. The checks functioning tech improvements have been fairly okay. Do we want to spend a lot more? Like not my call, but the amount of money I have left was gonna have to do anything robust, like the cameras and they're kind of a more. Wholehearted system, whether we knew we were living here or not. So that was kind of where we ended up with the funds we had set aside. Out of that number to be one hundred and thirty is off from the two point somethings of, you know, that's where we were on what was asked. Those questions.
Any other questions? Is that one?
Oh, the council member in Athlin, and then I think the mayor wants to speak. I can't see you, but go ahead.
There were actually two parts to my question, and the other one had to do with the funding source for. Finance or city hall type improvements. So typically, my experience has been that we always use the most restricted funds first and. Large majority of finance. Time allocations are. Are assigned to utilities and the building and permitting fund. So if you combine those, that's a large portion of. Finance time, all the billing for all of those, the utilities, the. Receiving of payments for building and permitting, all of that, there's just a ton of work that's related to that. And so for me, I would prefer that the portion of. The finance position and the finance software and even city hall, a portion of that obviously is to support finance staff. In that. That we would use those funds. Those funds are. There's a large surplus in those funds and so I would rather use. Those monies to pay for the this position rather than. Use ARPA, which is pretty open ended at this point. So that's, I was just trying to understand why we decided to use ARPA. For that, when there's other more restricted funds available that. Are easily, more than easily justified to use those funds. And in fact. Those type of funds are typically like an enterprise fund or. A special revenue fund, like they have specific revenues to use for their expenses. And they're supposed to be self sufficient and not being subsidized from outside.
Does Steph want to respond to that before the mayor goes or the administrator?
Yes, so the, it is true that. The finance team is funded through these restricted UPOs. These projects are. In the vein of some of the ARPA, the initial suggestions on what to spend ARPA for, which is operational efficiency covering. So during the COVID pandemic, a lot was lost in staff time and making sure that cities and municipalities and regional acting gets operated. So what we were proposing with the remaining amount is really. Yes, utilities will certainly benefit from a more sophisticated and robust. Open government platform. However, the open government platform, when it works well, is what is our backbone for the entire city. It's my backbone for the HR work that I do, the UKD improvements. Performance management templates and running the performance reviews through them. So. Yes, utilities can support it. It seems as though ARPA could equally support it in that it really, these. These tasks are designed for overall city operational excellence as opposed to kind of directly associated with utilities. And paying to rebuild. So that's why the choice. Well, that's why we're proposing this use. When we realized that we had money that was available and not committed. We wanted to offer council, cities propose. This is what city staff feel is most needed for us to run the city effectively and to do our jobs. Council might have other ideas, but we just wanted to offer the council. Our suggestion. And this is our suggestion.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, and I would echo what city administrator McNabb said and actually follow on of that is that open government and actually expand a little more. Is that our finance department is not just funded by utilities and enterprise funds. It is in large chunk funded by our general fund. Open government was supposed to be fully implemented by now. And as the memo that council received last week clearly drew out. There were a lot of roadblocks for the previous finance director to implement the software appropriately. Due to continued competing priorities and the lack of ability to get the time to implement the software. Which put the city in a position of being in a place where the software is not functioning well. It was not implemented appropriately. In addition to, you know, the, this definitely being a significant portion that should, in fact. Had to pass the straight base test, be funded by general fund dollars. In general, ARPA is general fund dollars. We also need to consider the fact that this work has to be done. We have had significant expenses that council is well aware of, including our insurance going up by over one hundred and fifty thousand this year alone. Where we are going to need some of that buffer that we have planned for and saved for. And then, and I'll also add that being back in Washington DC just a few weeks ago. That it continued to be reiterated by members of Congress. That in fact, staffing and doing exactly this type of work is the intent of the ARPA funds. And reallocating at this point and putting them into two different projects that are not part of the intent and projects that are not ready to go. And can't be utilized before the end of the year, which is at risk of losing that remaining money altogether. Yes, it has been a threat since the implementation of ARPA. What I heard loud and clear in multiple congressional offices in March is that this is in fact still a risk. I think, you know, as this council really knows, administration and I put. Our money where our mouth is when it comes to making sure that finances are spent appropriately and spent in the right places. And I believe there's no better investment. For the city at this point than to get the open government software updated and completed as it should be. And getting that additional financial help to. Cover all of the things that were not able to get done during the previous finance director's term, which were beyond our control and that were mostly. Roadblocks from the legislative level. And so this is when I look back to seven years. Some of the things that aren't being done, this finance person will bring up time to be done, are things that have been. Council has wanted and administration has wanted for seven years now. And because of finance directors being. Distracted from their day to day duties for multiple reasons, including managing COVID. These things haven't been done and they are essential to the health and operation of our city as well as making sure that we continue to get clean audits. So this is not something to be considered lightly. This isn't. Just toss your money where you want to toss it. This is really important to the city's overall health and wellbeing. So I just really want to hammer that message home because this is something. That in year seven should have been done in year, some of these things should have been done in year one. And that was beyond my control. So we want to make sure now that we have a new finance director that's been here six months, who's building her team and we're building the department in a manner. That is extraordinarily professional, bringing in highly sought after people to our city. That she has the bandwidth and her team has the bandwidth and the support. To get everything to where it needs to be by the end of the year so that we can head into the next biennium. Fully solvent and with the tools and resources we need so that we are not back here in six months or a year having or two years. Having the same conversation again that's been had multiple times over the last years. Thank you.
I'll get back to you in one minute, Councilor Naflin. I have a, oh, go ahead, Council member Mercer.
Yeah, I was just trying to say, I mean, I know there's a lot of sort of leeway in terms of the use of ARPA funds. You know, and sort of the broad branch is is things that are gonna have a long term investment. I think there's sort of the merit set in. And sort of continue to give back. So these are obviously tangible investments in services and infrastructure that will continue to leverage. Couple of callouts for me is sort of the UKG module specifically, I said, assume a lot of those are going to address HR deficiencies. And that's been a long standing gap. That staff has brought attention both in terms of management, but not having a formally charged apartment. And the infrastructure in place. So, you know, I do view that as sort of a positive investment because they're staggered over six months. That sort of bumps up against the year end target for spending the fund. And in the absence of sort of alternatives, which again, sort of. Not bringing the additional things to the table, I think. The city administrator indicated this is sort of a staff recommendation. The the two things I would want to just make sure from a budget analyst perspective, given the. The lack of tangible artifacts that were provided the last time we put it paid to make sure that that is part of the contract, obviously the document, all the creation, the design work. So that can actually continue to sustain and. And and serve the staff. And then the other was just the clarification around the security upgrade piece. I know the smart car, smart lock was a part of that investment. Just a little more clarity in terms of what that scope of that additional work was, whether that was cameras. I know there's some hardware, PCD type things refreshes as well, but if you could provide some clarity, that would be appreciated.
So it actually a little bit more physical layout.
Okay.
So when you walk into city hall, there's that one. Kind of half gate that opens with a little push lock. And stuff, I think probably since the second day I was here, viewed the front desk configuration as not terribly safe for them. And so really the safety and security upgrade of the front are more designed to reconfigure the front to be a little more safer.
All right, my question was, I just to confirm. I'm guessing these are one time plus, so it's not like a subscription or something. I was for public knowledge, you know, when they see modding hole or something like that, that it's like a one time thing, you're getting this to make it work.
It is for a time that there is a small angle.
Okay.
More annual fee.
So the money associated with the UKG is partly for implementation of all those. Scheduling module, which one of the specific items that will improve is paying for police. So police are on a different schedule than we see stuff. And trying to reconcile their payroll. So when we implemented UKG as part of the windows, we, for reasons that I don't know. Didn't buy a scheduling module and you need the scheduling module to talk the payroll model so that every day or every pay period, you're not manually re-entering. Employee data, specifically the police department, which is on a completely different. So part of the cost for UKG are one time some cost for just implementing these modules. It will increase our subscription to UKG, I think director man a hundred dollars a month. Overall, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Kuzfeld, what is that? Did you want to weigh in? Can we circle back around?
I think all these proposed people.
I think all these proposed people pay a ton of money.
I agree. I mean, I don't work with anything in Kira, it's those and that. I work with Facebook, that's scary enough.
Okay, then we'll go back to Councilmember Anaplan. Go ahead.
Yeah, I think there might be a misconception of, I am in full support of these expenses. Um, the finance module, the finance position and the security upgrades. The issue is that we could free up more flexible money to do things that also need to get done if we used some of the utility and building and permitting money to pay for the finance. And I understand that even though when things flow through the general fund, it doesn't mean general funds are paying for it because employees that are assigned to the general fund or overhead administrative costs that flow through the general fund are paid back by the utilities using inter-fund transfers to allocate part of those costs. So even if something is general fund, it's reimbursed by the utility and reimbursed by the building and permitting fund, both in direct salary allocations or inter-fund transfers. So I, I'm not suggesting we don't do these things or that we don't um invest in what's being requested here. We have a lot of other projects that we're struggling to pay for with less money. Even Third Avenue, we could give more money using the ARPA money towards those projects. It would free it up and then we would use um utility money and building and permitting. I think you could easily justify at least fifty percent of the cost because even if it's a, has to do with payroll or doing performance reviews, um you do those on utility employees and, you know, anyway, I just all I'm trying to suggest is that I think that we would have more flexible money to pay for projects that we've really been struggling to pay for if we utilized some of our sewer and building and permitting money. That's all I'm suggesting. I'm not saying we shouldn't do these. I just know that Third Avenue is more than triple the cost that was estimated and we're really gonna struggle to pay for that project. So anytime I can think of how to save money and have more money to do those kinds of projects, that's what I'm thinking about. So I just wanted to share that, that I'm not suggesting that we do not do these recommended projects.
Thank you. City Administrator?
Um, we did look at that, whether or not we could, when we came up with options, um potentially do, for instance, another transfer into the Third Avenue project or something like that. The challenge is with the way the ARPA funds are structured, it's not just that you can um do another transfer to a project that we know needs more resource, like Third Avenue. They have to be under contract and anticipated to be spent on a very specific thing. So um, we did investigate whether another fund transfer would meet the ARPA requirement or not. Because unless we can also say that those monies are attached to a specific contract for Third Avenue, they're not gonna be spent in accordance with our.
Mayor?
And I would just point out that spending money, it doesn't matter where you spend a fund from, the money is being spent. There is no cost savings by using utility funds and making the accounting much more difficult for these projects and these items um than using um ARPA funds or general funds. Um, salaries are paid from utilities. Uh, that's not exactly how it works. I have the finance director is shaking her right here. Um, and the bottom line is if we're budgeting and spending money, we're spending money. There's no opportunity for savings or just spending the money. The opportunity for savings actually comes from efficiencies in accounting and efficiency priorities. Um, and I just want to note as well, that Third Avenue being three times as estimated, three times as much as it was a few years ago, that is standard with most major construction projects right now. Um, and that is not akin to a Duval issue, and I just want to make sure that that's clear and on the record, that this has nothing to do with how the city has planned for the project. Um, the only thing it has to do with is that this project is not in a staffing in the right funding to get it out the door and start the construction. So that's a really important distinction that I think we just need to make sure that we're recognizing and acknowledging that using money from different funds does not actually save taxpayer dollars at all because the money is still being spent.
Other councilmembers? Did you wanna reconfirm if you're interested or anyone, I should say, if anyone changed their mind or wanna discuss more um before we move on? No, not yet. This would, this would probably come back on like a consent to a future meeting or something like that. I just wanted to say quickly, I I don't disagree with you at all, Councilmember Anaplan. I, I just think for me, like, I'm like, I feel that staff, you know, for me is the best indicator of like what all the factors, like the workload and what could get done and where the money can come from. So I, I'm just looking at what we can do as quickly as possible. That's funny. Uh, but I think you raised a good point. This is just for me on this particular issue. I, I would love to stick with the staff recommendation. And it sounds like I have to count pull, it's leaning that way as well. So this would probably come back on a consent agenda item in the future. Um, with that, we'll go ahead and move on to our next item, um just to make sure we have time here, uh which is feedback from core competency brainstorming session with our city administrator.
Hi, yes. Um, thank you. So this is really um just an opportunity to share with council and to involve council in some of the HR work that um we will be doing this year. So next slide. Um, staff, we get a preview of it. All of the directors. Oh my God. Um, so this is just the twenty twenty four task list that I've put together for things that um I would like to accomplish uh by the end of twenty twenty four. It's a pretty busy list. Uh, there is a lot of policy work that um when I came needed to get done. Um, and then there's just good practice work that also needs to get done. So um kind of recruitment, um retention, employee benefits, that's in yellow. Um, the checkmarks are the stuff that's underway. Um, but one thing we need to do is for our interviews, we're doing competency and behavior-based interview, interviewing. So meaning we're taking a look at four-way open recruitment and saying, okay, what are the kinds of not just hard skills, like functional technical skills, but what are the kind of behavioral competencies we want in our decisions? We're building our new questions around um what we identify before we even open our recruitment. That's just good practice that before you recruit, you know what you're looking for. So for the last about six recruitments, we have built those interview questions based on competency. And I also need to build out the yoga platform. Um, in a similar vein as to UKG, we have yoga. Um, we have maybe operationalized about fifteen percent of its capabilities. And so we need to maximize our use of that platform because we pay for it and we choose it. Um, we need to become, you know, fully and appropriately staffing clerk's office, blood staff PD. Um, we want to launch our food enforcement office role, which is new to the city. So that's the recruitment stuff we have planned. I need to write an employee handbook, um which we don't have, uh which is a massive project. Luckily, I didn't do that work. It took a year, a few years, but I mean, the work got done. Um, we need to revoke work policy. We need to change the way we do our annual performance conversations or evaluations. They're all big. They need to be competency-based. Um, we need to revise our service manager role. Um, so yeah, there's a lot of work. Um, but for tonight, the three things on this list that kind of go together, um when you think about a hire to retire um uh employee interface in the city is that we design competencies before we get interviewed. Then when we launch job descriptions and recruit for those job descriptions, that we have these competencies in mind and that employees are evaluated. So we're gonna do that, or we're gonna involve council in that project tonight. Um, and this is uh the first touch of it. So next, um, has anybody here done card tours and competency days card reading? Yeah. Uh, next slide. Okay, so here are the instructions. So you each have, um, I'll use some here. And you each have. And so what you're gonna do is you're gonna take out the white cards that are numbered one through thirty-eight. And those are all that you need right now. And you're gonna take about ten minutes. Beat all the cards. So kind of sort through the thirty-eight, get familiar with them. And then you are going to create three piles. Pile A is essential mission critical for a city of law employees. So what are the things you think that every employee that is employed by the city devolved from that? And there's lots of them. Sharing accountability. That might be really high on your list. You're gonna find twelve cards that you think are essential for any city. The second pile is the nice to have. So thirteen cards should go into, that would be nice to have, but it's not mission critical. And then the remaining thirteen cards should be in the least useful for a city employee. But the idea that every city employee could have a, at least four that we all share together. Um, that could be valuing diversity, that could be ensuring accountability so that when we have um interview questions or we have our performance evaluations or four, the kind of profile that we all share collectively, and then hiring managers and supervisors can choose the remaining competencies that are designed for the whole process. The mine are not gonna be the same, how does it truly, that's not gonna be the same with the finance director. So that's the, that's the um that we're doing today. Yes.
Yeah, let's, um, I know the police department kind of stand along in certain areas. Is this applicable for the police department or is this strictly for city of all?
Uh, is related to police department, but not, uh, police department has their own set of.
Right, yeah.
They have all its own. However, we do have two um administrative professionals in the police department that these were.
Okay, so it's not, not the officers.
Not the guys. Which we got, right? But these are for the remaining forty of us. Are there any other questions?
Be limited, like you have to only put this many on.
I'm getting worried.
So flipping hand, I cheat.
So, yeah, you cannot cheat. It has to be called the number thirty-five. Okay? And so then when you are finished, uh, please transfer your cases on the tally sheet. So after um council does the check, we'll have all the directors do it and then all of our supervisors do it as well so that we can identify um for the city. And then I can go about redoing our performance evaluation, um incorporating them into our job descriptions and into. Okay?
How much, how much rich?
Um, sorry. Fifteen minutes, is this four? We're gonna be fifteen minutes?
And, and all of them are important, so making this point the. Go with your guess. Overthinking is not one of my strong suit.
Oh, yeah.
These do change based on the thinking of whatever role we want on.
What role?
Yes, so. What we tried to do is kind of come up with the four of like, what does a city evolve to, or what should all of us? Inherently have, and then every role is going to be a little different, so. Um. You know, the deputy city clerk position, that's a little bit of slightly different competency. So there'll be. Different ones for each classification in evolve, but we'll have some that are just. And I found the best thing to do this is kind of gut reaction and start with your pilots and then go through. Until you get the right amount. Um, and usually your gut reaction is ends up being the right one. Uh, the word on the key doesn't really matter, it's just there, not one, be fourteen, yeah, just as long as they're tough. Oh, no, when you're done, you can just put them all back in.
Do you want to share? They look there, the left step, so they need to do that.
And look, just throw them up to her, we like.
Well, I'm certainly not going to throw them back.
You gently place them down.
That's rude. Wouldn't be very much kind of fun, huh? That's true, you know.
No, are we getting graded? Nope.
Just jobs.
Yeah. Well, I'll combine these with. We do internally with our supervisors. Stretchy. Probably probably stretchy to see which things rise to the top. Um. That's kind of how to. Feels like there would be a wide spread, but they're probably, it's quite a bit of overlap in the other thing.
Usually there is.
Yeah.
I mean, I'll be curious if they're all over the map. Um.
Mine is going to be, um, at least today, vision critical, really focus on, um, some more of the soft skills.
Yeah.
Uh, at the same time. That's the hardest part of the essential and good to have. Um. A lot of that stuff is actually. Essential.
Well, you should consume that our, uh, interview process will. Take care of the functional techniques, yes. Just why we hired. Somebody else, anyone willing to. Uh, do you need a Mr. Report?
Yeah, if that's all you have to do, then you have to, we can definitely get them. That, that's always a good one to look out. That's what I'm doing. Do you want us to start as we're done in the last picture, or did it already sell?
Does everyone? Ron, you've done hers. Do you want us to pass the card? Um, I'll put the cards on the sheet whenever. Ron, I'm always against it if you're handwriting bar.
Thank you again, Steve, for getting my I C B.
And we're ready, okay, um, first up is the community development director.
Good evening, Mayor Councilman and members of the community. Uh, so March was a busy month within the building department. We issued eighteen new single panel building permits. We have ninety five new permits under review. We've issued a total of fifty four permits for them. Twenty eight permits have been issued. Our inspections were marked for two hundred eighty seven and for the year. They're about eighty five, maybe this would be March, was like mayor, June, you know, these numbers for inspections. Um. We did get, obviously, let me talk a little bit about this at the last meeting, we did get more permits kind of put into the system because the building code changed. So we kind of expected that, that's why you see ninety five permits in our. In our review portal, right? Uh, last week and the week before, the building department has been in training. Um. Wawa, which is the Washington Association of Building Officials, that's where our team goes every year to keep up their certifications. And to learn what's new, and then also to be trained on new codes, and so they. Uh, did review and attended classes for plan review on a new energy code, and they've done that twice now, and there'll probably be at least. One more. Uh, so really great news, our postcard is super effective, and we had four hundred surveys in the first like five to seven days. Um, it usually is a big push that first time, we'll send out some more information through social media, so my expectations are a little high. So I'm hoping for close to a thousand. We have it open for three weeks, so stay tuned. If you haven't filled it out yet, please, please do so and. Share with your neighbors and ask them to fill it out. This is the survey that helps inform our comp plan. For the next generation. I was telling people, it's one of the most important things you can do, because by the time we're done with this process. We've locked in our policies and our rules for at least. Uh, this is just a community development update, so, uh, we're preparing, oh. We're preparing the park open house summary, I was like. Not the open house, we did that already. Uh, the house, the summary, we actually just got it from our consultants, and we're looking at that, and then we'll send it along to council, and then, um. Council will also be reporting out in general about our open house and our meetings. Um, at the, at our council meetings, under council reports. We have our next, uh, big meeting for the community is May first, and that's for the comp plan, transportation. And capital facilities, so we're super excited about that. Um, it's, uh. It is a lot of work, and this is really public works and planning and building working together, so it's all over our teams. Uh, the temporary line policy update went to the planning commission at the last meeting, so we're. Taking their feedback, making some investments, talking with our city attorney. I think I can share back, the, the hardest thing, I think, for planning commission will be for council. Is that when you take that neutral lens, that applies to everybody, so you can't pick and choose which groups to apply code to anymore. Um. For short term run up presentation, we are currently actively working on that, so we're set for that presentation, uh, at the next council meeting, so we're excited about that. We've learned a ton about short terminals, doing some research, and also going to a webinar. Uh, Farm Fish Flood is super active right now. Oh. Uh, King County, and this is honestly, I want to lay a flag King County for the work they've done under Farm Fish Flood. By the way, they did receive a pretty substantial award from. Um, from Valley Council Team Two, so they won another Green Globe Award. Technically, we were part of that Green Globe Award, it's the second one we've been as a group issues. I do want to say that, and we don't say enough about what the county does do for us. Uh, as part of our eight years of work, the flood caucus, which I'm part of, we pushed really hard on getting. Would focus on our low and high flows, and then ultimately this would help the, you know, farm, fish, and flood as well. And they calibrated it to six fairly large storms, and they also have taken the model out now to twenty eighty. Um, so. I've talked to Cynthia, I'm hoping that we can actually bring somebody from the county in to kind of run that and show us what it looks like, because it really is. Pretty super amazing newer technology, it's super expensive to input into this model, so whereas a femogram. It's not something that as a city we could do, but now that it's there. Um, they'll be able to change data, they did use an open source model, but you still have to collect all of the data. So, I had my first presentation a couple of weeks ago, they consider it seventy five percent. Um, completed, so we were, like I said, super excited. This then leads into the Cross Valley Road Study, which was also an item that was on our Farm Fish Flood, like office list, and honestly, everybody's list. Um. They initially started looking at four, we found road crossing locations. They somewhat narrowed it down to two likely locations, one is fairly close to Duval. The other one is fairly close to Carnation, so stay tuned, stay tuned on that. I mean, it's exciting that it's moving forward, it does not mean that a road's going to get built anytime soon, it could take, I mean, take a generation, really, it, it sometimes can be a slow work. But it's good work, this is a really good. Um, step forward, so I think it's worthy of achieving.
Then, quick question, if that's okay, um, the C D model is not only for storm-based flooding, not like catastrophic, like the.
It's really actually like it's spread, it feels like.
Okay, because I know this is separate. And then H M F C, so I just wanted to keep it.
This isn't just for like your five hundred year flood, kind of one hundred year, or fifty, or twenty, or ten, or five, or two, so that was a really good question.
And did those sort of related question to that, I'm thinking that's well, even their climate models and, and other changes to reflect. And trends that we expect in terms of rainfall or shifting weather patterns.
That is another really question, and yes, uh, we, uh, not we, but King County and we, I'll say the we. Uh, is working with the climate group, and they're the ones that helped us come to that twenty eighty. Model with input for many increased. Increased storms. Next slide. Uh, we have the park children open space plan, I do want to say thank you to the mayor who kicked off the meeting. Um, it was a great kickoff, and then also to our mayor for, our mayor for, um, David Henry. Also, who is an advisory committee member. Uh, I would call it not, like, we didn't have a ton of people there, but the quality of people we have there was exceptional. And so we got really good input, so as usual, you know, planners, we always use like thought exercises and post-its and all those, so those are just the top of that meeting. Um. We are still working on tasks, we still have to complete the rest of our advisory committee meetings. Um, we'll be finished with those, um, by June, we're doing what's called a vet cabling, that Earth Day, do all these, remember? And in the park. Um, planning commission review and recommendation will start May seventh number, and council catch point will also be. Through May seventh number, and then we'll hold the final decision, and the expected decision in October.
Yep. All right, I'll turn it over to Director Liza.
Uh, the media, Mayor Council staff, he's Lou Metzke. Uh, it's been a simple, but I will turn it in, so the city was awarded four hundred thousand dollars from P I D for the Complete Streets Program. It was a truncated program, you know, it wasn't called. Their real program, but it came out and it is money that has to be spent this year. So, I put one fifty of this for one forty second, we're going to offset some of the cost we were getting from early. With, uh, new grants, so that would free up other resources that we were going to have to shuffle over to that project. So that's, uh, great news. They were very deliberate, like, the money had to be spent, spent point three, oh, we have one. Oh, we have one project ready to go and out for, you know, design and another grant. So they were completely supportive. So that's, um, great news to give that off. That's other transfers from, I think we had streets capital or re into that pocket. Uh, the strike that they pulled through is underway. Uh, we'll try to get some, I think we'll post some video or whatnot. But that is HDP, so high density polyethylene pipe. We don't have any in service for our water system, but it's the first piece. Uh, pipe fused together. They're also doing about eight hundred feet of boring under the creek that's on the south end by the, um, pole line itself. So we are in the P S E, you know, you know, Aridole right away to move to replace that main. It should be a pretty quick project. It's just pipe in an area that doesn't bother anybody. So, um, end of May, they could be done, which is great. The communities in that area are served via our water system. So they're in the county, on the trail and then south, where they serve about twenty units from the pole pipeline area, south towards, you can get there through Old Mall P one twenty four. So there's kind of a band of, um, houses in the woods in the other part of. Uh, they will be served in the bulk two. There should be no one destruction and not a, not a big deal. But we're about to get all the, the work is ready to go to be deployed. It's just timing now of receiving brackets, receiving baskets, getting materials delivered to the school. Um, that, um, feature there has been great and limited to the hardware stores, just getting us all the power back off. These pick the look, these pick the number, and then the kids will assemble it the weekend after Mother's Day. So everything go there. They'll keep it up to be, and we'll grab it in the week prior to Duval Days, which is super busy. And there's a holiday Monday in there because of the normal day. So that'll be, uh, a tight turnaround, but it all is a go. Um, Big Rock Wall Field Base Two kicked off literally today at two, I jumped off on meeting to get on another. Um, first phase underway is a little simultaneous layout along with property acquisition and purchasing, uh, work. So there is the bulk of the project that will happen. Obviously some sort of fields and for parking and access. Um, they're going to look at how to fit that best and then see how much space we need. And we will also, um, at that time, they're going to look at all of the old survey work, bring forward some of the features that were most interested by our community. And then we're going to post another survey that is what's real, it's happening, it's under design. Here's the, come, you know, like two weeks previously, do these features still fit? And hopefully we get a good vote and then we'll bring that back to council. Uh, Michael and the team will show how those items either they recommend or how they offer to per view, uh, and we'll, then we can. The designing can be wrapped up, but that sounds off bad. Big time, um, procurement of properties, there wasn't interest party to the south. We had zero response, nor, um, mixed. No things from gaining even on the east it, because it definitely a little less due, but, um, we're, are hopeful. But we do have that one point four billion dollar grant to, uh, obtain property. Uh, banner pole bid game today, sorry folks, a little bit of a hundred and nineteen thousand. So, uh, not to skip it, I don't think you're looked at about that, but third avenue came in, here's American item. And that's great news. That over, we estimated that eight fifty was five point tax. So, um, this is one of my slides, the, the banner poles. Obviously that's above anything, whatever we did with council, we said to come back with, those have not been invented, um. So you could just came today, but they look complete. Couple of questions here and there, but the design period, they can meet our timelines and then we, oh. Yes, so, uh, I don't know. Other recommendations are going to be due again in the fall or winter or not. Um, you know, we could look at potentially building them ourselves, but again, that's not going to happen anytime soon. And it would have to be certainly a book coming here to have a kind of that all. So there are your two numbers. We did get two bits, which is.
Yeah, I had a question for about the second bit. Is that sort of, that's a rather large discrepancy between the two arms. Yeah. But same, same back in.
Yeah.
Yeah, it just puts the estimate into perspective a little bit, but that's a sort of a wild, um, you know, outlier.
That's my actual.
Or big street banner pole that is on Big Rock Road.
So the ones that are proposed on Big Rock Road, that mimic the ones that are right out front here. So at some point we will either be able to come back to the contract proposal or be recommend, uh, rejection of all this. Not sure what sort of conversation then, when you mean the matter of the. See.
Uh, yes, I will, uh, meet in a short meeting with the economic developments committee. I mean, we're just a little shaky when the bids are ready and kind of cover what up. And I think it would be great if there is like a staff, uh, recommendation as well, if, you know, if the feeling is that it would be better to wait a little and see what. But then sometimes there's things where they're just keep getting more expensive. So, um, anyways, yeah, that'd be good to call. Right?
Right. I was going to say my recommendation is going to be to pull this and put that money back into needed things that, you know, being completely funded. You know, budget with cost measures and whatever, I think. Um, I think, you know, it's a, it's a great idea that the bid's coming high. And, um, I think that, uh, since this project started getting discussed, there's a lot of items that are more urgent and long-term impact need to the city. A hundred and twenty thousand, we're not going to get that economic benefit out of those goals for probably twenty years. So, um, as far as the act basis of the city, so, um, I, I would ask, um, my staff will, we'll discuss the staff recommendation, but, um, my, my recommendation at this point is the bullet and reality of three, two. Um, things that are more important to the long-term operations of the state.
Uh, Councilor, remember, sir?
Several, just one solid question. What about for, for, I, I guess it was one is be interesting, you know, if there were other ways to communicate, you know, other than the banner poles. Because I think they tap into that aspect of being inside of the city, that, that, and by that, there might be a little cross talk, which that would be great. In addition to sort of putting that in the corner. The other was, I was curious if either the first, the second bidder, um, if that included the, the company that did the initial proposal, I just was curious.
No, so that was built by a separate contractor and they were like, they're not going to dabble in it.
Yeah, yeah.
Same material whole, uh, company out of.
Okay.
Now you're in.
Thank you.
All right, the, uh, oh, yeah, any other questions for her? And just a few updates from City Hall. Um, our public records request portal, um, is launched. So, um, we are, we've processed our first request through. We then integrating it into the website. So people making public records requests, they're still able to mail it in. Emails of all the available options that they have prior to having the portal will still be available. But internally from city staff, um, we are able to process the public records request, um, much easier, um, much more smoothly. And we're also able to pull reports out of it, but we'll show how much time for, um, taking the process request, how much time they put on request. The designation of request, are they planning request, are they request for information from the P D? So, um, the portal will have a lot of reporting capability that we didn't intend to have done manually before. So we're really excited about it. I wanted to offer congratulations and thank you to our clerk who, uh, took this idea and made it a reality. So, um, thank you to him.
Um, if I can ask too, I know you will have the ability to also share the public record request to the public. Um, we have an estimate on when, when we think we'll be able to launch that now that we're live with the portal.
Oh, it's, um, so if you go to, good evening, everyone. Uh, if you go to our website, to the city website right now and go to like, uh, request public records and go into the portal, uh, you can see all the requests that we've received in twenty twenty four. The scope of those requests, who made those requests. Um, and the information to the first, well, it's a little skewed because we have to do them after the test. But, um, from now on, uh, it should be accurate as to when we received it and how long it took and how much staff time it took to complete those.
Thank you very much. This is, um, for those who don't know, I'm counsel, this is something, something we've been wanting done. Be able to share that information and provide the thing request to the public that you, the actions from what's been fulfilled for over a decade. Um, and so this is a huge, um, achievement and a huge project. I just want to congratulate John and thank you for all of your hard work to see this progress. And it's a huge transparency, um, win for the public and for this.
Thank you.
Um, the second thing is we are at the end of the month, going to create a construction update on our webpage, which will be a one stop shop for information on King County and workshop construction projects that will impact the city of Duval. And we anticipate a lot of what we'll think that they are to be a developed project. We do not have any deep plan this summer that will, uh, bring a city that will significantly impact traffic. And there are a lot of things that will impact traffic this summer. So we're going to try to create our own information on the website, drive people there. We are, um, in active, um, meetings and conversations with King County, asking that they also provide their own contact information that we can share with the public so that they can get information directly from King County. Um, and we're looking at many ways that public get the information now to the public, um, including our development community, our special events community, vendors who are coming in, um, because there's a lot going on. Um, in almost every direction into Duval this summer. Um, just a reminder, if you haven't seen, um, we are having our Pride Event on May eleventh, um, from twelve to four. There will be a ribbon cutting of the new installation at noon. And then at twelve thirty to four down at Duval Park, we're going to put the stage up, we're going to have performers, food truck, um, vendors, uh, to do a celebration event that we've had, we've been calling for vendors, performers, artists. Um, over the weekend and we already have people signed up in the future, where we've had a lot of entries. And we're really excited about that. And then, um, K C L S went by this last week that they are hosting a couple of events. I just wanted to make you aware of that. So Friday, fourth, third week. Uh, they're having an event at the Duval Library, the whole Rainbow Family, um, Rainbow Parenting. So that will be Friday afternoon. Uh, in addition, council will receive an invitation for maybe they're having an intellectual freedom event at the Duval Library. Um, I will share that at the K C L S Board of Trustees meeting on Wednesday, um, some community input about those events that are planned. And so if you hear, um, you know, community interest in those, we are aware. Um, and we're, you know, um, offering for messaging for, for reasons. Um, and with that, I think that is what we have to share for this week. Um, any questions for me?
All right, that sounds good. So, um, don't forget to check out the written reports and we'll go ahead and adjourn us at fifty five P M and be back at seven. Thank you.
Tuesday, April second, we've also been canceled meetings for, as you're always joining me, um the last. My pledge will begin to the flag of the United States there. And it's good report, which stands. This will deliver to you. Thank you. Um thirdly, please take the wrong.
Mayor, what's that?
Here.
Mayor, Lieutenant McHenry.
Yes.
Mister Isaacson. Mister Schaefer. Mister Mercer, here. Mister Supple, here. Miss Knapplin.
Here.
Miss Kukel.
Yeah. We have a forum. And with that, do we have any uh additions or corrections to this evening's agenda? I would say that um can remove the city administrator's report. Um since that was uh provided during the committee of the whole. And then uh was would someone like to make a motion to approve this evening's agenda? So then. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All of those and Councilmember Navon, if you could unmute for the votes, that would be appreciated, please. Um all of the vote opposed, please say no. Motion passes. Um and actually, as a reminder, um inside this agenda, we'll do roll call votes so that we. Because we don't have someone on screen, we need to make sure that we have a vote from that individual. Alright, um moving on. We have two. Uh the first one is for sexual assault awareness. Whereas sexual assault is pervasive. Every sixty seconds, someone is sexually assaulted in the United States. And whereas Black Indigenous and other people of color, people living in poverty, LGBTQ plus people, elders, people with disabilities and others who have been historically oppressed. Are disproportionately affected by sexual violence in significant and complex ways. And whereas sexual assault is among the most under-reported crimes for many reasons. Survivors who are already most marginalized face additional barriers to reporting such as language, immigration status, or disability. Whereas Indian sexual violence requires us to address racism, sexism, and all forms of oppression that contribute to the perpetration of sexual assault. And whereas sexual violence exists on a continuum of the behavior that includes racist, sexist, transphobic, homophobic, ableist, or other hate speech. This ranges from rape jokes to verbal harassment to physical assaults. And whereas by working together as a community, we can alleviate the trauma of sexual violence by ensuring supportive resources are available. To all survivors while standing up to and actively disrupting harmful attitudes and behaviors that contribute to sexual violence. Now therefore, I, Amy O'Grlander, mayor of the city of Duval, join advocates and communities throughout King County. In taking action to prevent sexual violence by standing with survivors and for Crayling. April twenty twenty four as Sexual Assault Awareness Month. Together, we commit to a safer future for our communities, children, young people, adults, and Indians. And the second confirmation this evening is for former prisoner of war recognition day. Whereas through the annals of history, brave men and women in our nation have been called upon to defend freedom and democracy. Often enduring unimaginable hardships and sacrifices in the face of adversity. Whereas among those courageous individuals are those who have been taken as prisoners of war, enduring captivity, deprivation, and often torture. Yet demonstrating extraordinary resilience, courage, and faith in the principles for which they stood. Whereas the United States of America recognizes the immense debt of gratitude owed to these former prisoners of war. Whose unwavering spirit and sacrifice serve as a testament to the enduring strength of the human spirit. Whereas National Former Prisoner of War Recognition Day. Provides an opportunity for all Americans to honor these individuals' courage and sacrifice. And express our profound appreciation for their service and dedication to our nation. Now therefore, I, Amy O'Grlander, mayor of the city of Duval, hereby proclaim April ninth, two thousand twenty four. As former prisoner of war recognition day. And call upon all citizens, government agencies, organizations, and communities to observe this day. With appropriate ceremonies, activities, and remembrances. And to express our heartfelt gratitude to all former prisoners of war for their selfless service and sacrifice. Thank you. Um moving on to comments from the audience, um we do not have anybody physically in the building this evening. Um and so I'll just ask the clerk to receive any public comments we distributed to council.
Uh we did not receive any public comment, right?
Excellent. Thank you very much. Okay, um moving on, we have a motion to approve this evening's consent agenda. So. All those in favor, please say aye. And actually, Councilmember, this was an easy one, so Councilmember Navon, please unmute.
Aye.
Um.
Aye. All of us in both please say no. Motion passes. Thank you. Um moving on to scheduled items, uh my report, it won't be too long tonight. Um it's been definitely a busy. Busy month. Um I missed a uh council meeting due to a sudden severe illness, um so I'm sorry I was a bit slow. Um but I am on the mend. Um and I wanted to share my report from the National cities um earlier in May. Um I did, of course, have the opportunity to attend, um this was probably my approximately my tenth time even more. Going back to Washington D for DC for this conference. Uh this year it was on behalf of the Association of Washington Cities and my role as vice president. Uh we met with uh leadership, met with our entire congressional delegation overall, as well as had great conversations with Senator Murray in Kentville. Um there continues to be significant disappointment in Washington DC. Uh the Senate has a significant challenge in that there has been bipartisan agreements um. To uh budgets, uh bills that need to move forward that really impact the American people. Um and unfortunately, on the outside, the majority leadership is blocking roads even though they're supported by the members of the one party. Uh so uh there continues to be some real games being played um at the depth to the detriment of our communities, especially those. That are less privileged in our communities. Um. In general, the conference was absolutely fantastic as usual. Uh we did have the opportunity to hear from President Biden, um as well as historian Doris Burns Goodman. Um the president, as always, um is is very supportive in cities and live street running, all of us, that he was, uh as an elected official before. Um ascending to the office of the president in United States. Uh and that is definitely very clear in the policies that he has moved forward over the last several years. Um and with that, we have the upcoming um. National Annual Conference for National cities coming up in Tampa, Florida in November. Um so if anyone would like to come, I'd love to see you there. Um also, a quick reminder that uh Association of Washington Cities registered from February coming soon for. Uh the annual conference in Vancouver, Washington, that is the week of January. Uh so many of us have been to one day of that week often would like to see as many people as possible there. Um Association of Washington Cities just had a recent fair. Brian Perry, who was a policy director for Sound Cities Association for several years, is now accepted in the position as a communication director for the Angeles City. Um big loss for Sound Cities Association, big game. Um both in his talent and skill in communications, as well as his. Um very in-depth knowledge of policy across the board and his political acuity. Uh so looking forward to seeing even more great things out of that organization. And I think all of us, the attention, regular communication. Know how strong it was to start with. Um and I accept that, expect that we'll continue to see. Um further depth and growth uh with that work coming from the Association of Washington Cities. And uh include my report. I'm getting answered any questions. Seeing none, um do any council members have anything that you'd like to report on this evening? Uh Councilmember Kukel and then Mayor Lieutenant McHenry.
Um. I had one. I attended the steering committee meeting two, um with the operating plan on March twentieth. Um. We talked about. Well, most of it was handled by the farmers doing the transportation study and there was a lot of um explanation on how. The consensus were changing from roads that are arid and strict to bike ride and freedom and um. So roads have to take fall. Considerate as the planning. Um it was also interesting because there's a lot of people on. Um. Steering committee that are mutually opinionated and know that the highway is not really helpful. Um. They. Um. That was that was a big portion of the game. Um. We also talked about um. Yeah, we talked about which entities were responsible for which road. And. Do we do what or there was there was a lot of technical. Um. Oh, and then we also talked about our. Um vision statement and we decided we can get to. Revamp it with regards to heritage and form looking at each of these residents. Um that we need to have a reference to the local indigenous culture and regional side that we had in. Um there should be, and I'm progressing, that it is beyond the past role and I think hopeful setting, recognizing the endeavors. It was currently relevant and it's been bought.
Anyone have any questions? They're down. Remember to. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Lieutenant McHenry.
Alright, yeah, so I attended the Parks Trails Open Space Planting Open House and it was amazing. And I would agree, it wasn't a packed house with the people. There were quite a few people there and they were very engaged. Um what, I mean, I was amazed at how many notes and scribbles and I know I contributed a little to that too as well. But um I thought it was really well. It was very interactive. I felt like. No matter what kind of learner or um how you like to engage, there was something for everybody there. Um you can have a table with like trayons in case people brought kids or, you know, if you wanted to draw a picture yourself, you could. I mean, it was like really any way that you wanted to engage, you could do that at this meeting and and it was really great. I loved the. Uh kickoff by the mayor and then the. Excuse me, consultants, he's choking here. Um so I'd love to see, you know, when that all gets pulled together, but you guys can see it in the written report from the Cal. The materials from the meeting, not the outcomes, but I'll be really excited to see that. And especially, um I had asked. Director comments at our agenda meeting, a quick question, which was, I've heard a lot of comments about. Uh things slightly outside of city limits, but very much that impact us, you know, in connection to uh the toll pipeline trail, that kind of thing. Um. And so like, would you connect it with Cap Ungotten or Big Rock or, you know, things like that that. People in our city limits are concerned with and impact them. So I think that's what one of my biggest takeaways from it was. It's not just things in our city limits. It's also slightly on the edges too, because it very much is well connected. So I I just thought that was so well done. I'm excited to keep participating in that group. Um also attended the SPGA meeting, um which was in Snohomie. Um let's see, the Snohomie Police Chief gave an update on crime staffing. They had a lot going on in there, but it was really great and interactive. Um. And then um and I gave our update as well, but we have a lot of events coming up, so I just highlighted some of those and some of the big things we're working on, obviously Parks Trails, Open Space Planting Conference, and all that. Um I also want to remind council, there is, it's on the fifteenth, um coffee with Snohomie Tribe and uh Carnation. Uh city of Carnation, and it's gonna be incarnation this time. I know our city administrator expressed an interest in going. I um can go, I'll be coming right back in um from a trip. So if anyone else wants to attend, just let me know and I can order you to invite. Um but that's at like eight thirty in the morning, so it is a little early. Also, uh I won't say anything about AWC Conference of June because the mayor did, but just, I'm gonna try and see if I can go for one day. I have two kids at the ages with big dreams. This year, so it might be tricky, but I can at least possibly do the one day pass, which is always an option for you if you don't want to go for a few days. And then lastly, it's been a little while, but I want to start scheduling some helpful chats again. I haven't been doing that because I've just been really busy. So I'm gonna pick some dates, just month to month, at some local coffee shop and at varying times, um so the community can come out. And then I can always, of course, also send that in, pick the mayor and Cynthia and staff or the directors at least, um just if anyone wants to stop by, they can. And that's all I got.
Thank you, Mayor Lieutenant. Uh does anyone have any questions for Mayor Lieutenant? Alright, um seeing none, uh thank you for that report. We'll move on to some new business. Uh first one for discussion is update for twenty twenty four fee schedule regarding annual special event payments for discussion. Left by the city administrator.
Uh yes, well, good evening. Uh we have, uh so there are, there is a change on annual special event permit. Um but there are some other changes that were in the package, because this is only for discussion for tonight. Um there are some decision points for council, and so I'll walk you through what changes are proposed. On the fee schedule, why we're making them, and then point out what kind of uh decision points we have. And then uh after discussion tonight, I'll bring it to council at our next meeting and for potential decision approval. Um so next slide. Um so the first uh page is under other city fees. So there are a couple of changes here, um in addition to the fee schedule. The first is under the Big Rock Wall Field rental fees. You'll see a new fee for tournaments um with an approved special event permit. I set the price at two hundred and fifty dollars. Um this is just a proposed fee to hold a tournament here in the city. Two hundred and fifty is consistent with Snohomie. I wanted to offer um baffles as well. So baffle is two hundred and twenty dollars for an adult. And a hundred and ten for youth. So um it runs the gamut. So Snohomie and Boffle have a tournament fee. That is a one-time fee. There are cities that do it per hour. Um if anybody um. Has either been with your children, grandchildren, nieces, nephews to a tournament, um one of our uh nearby cities, the hourly fee was like fifty eight dollars. Um tournaments begin at eight in the morning and run, you know, sometimes at ten o'clock at night if you're playing lacrosse. Um start the next day at eight o'clock in the morning. Um so a fifty eight dollar an hour fee would get prohibitively expensive really fast. So I chose the um to kind of go with the middle, which was the uh. just simple fee, one-time fee. There's council decision here on, first of all, setting the amount. And if the fee is inclusive of a special event permit, so not only would we need a fee, but any tournament that they would have to put in a special event permit. Because that's how they get authorization to one, hold the field. Two, if they need trash, if they need please, if they want to bring food trucks to that permit. That's the city's way that we instigate the request for all of those activities. In addition, the special event permit contains the interim part. So that's the first new fee. And so I want to stop here, get some thoughts on the tournament fee that we've put together.
Councilmember Apple.
Is the 250 for both adult and you, because of the Boffel, that's two different fee structure.
Boffel has two different fee structures. I said it. I basically replicated some. Which was one, no matter what mine.
Councilmember Nattland.
Yeah, I apologize. I wasn't sure if my hand was working and then I, I saw it, but um. Yeah, I am curious how many fields Snoqualmie has. It says it's consistent with Snoqualmie versus Boffel. Depending on the type of tournament. It, you know, a baseball tournament might only be able to use a couple of fields. If it's a soccer tournament, they might only be able to use one field. So just the cost compared to how many fields you would get to use. And then also, I would like to have the special event permit fee be inclusive. So if it's $250, I don't want them to have to pay 250 plus another 50. I think it should be inclusive. With the assumption that you would still have to fill out the special event permit. And then I, just to double check, that would be the avenue, just to go back with my question from a couple of meetings ago. That would be the avenue if you wanted to bring in a food truck. That would be part of that whole conversation. It sounds like through the special event permit.
Yes, the special event permit is that avenues get a food truck because it does not food trucks that are temporary in nature for an event do not need the mobile food unit used that is permitted for the more permanent food trucks.
And then, did you know about the first question I had about the the fields, how many fields that includes in Snoqualmie versus Boffel?
I have no earthly idea how many fields each of those cities have. We just ran, ran a comparison of our neighboring jurisdictions and we've gotten, I have no idea.
Okay.
Mayor Pertham Henry, if you mind reminding me, how, how much is the special event permit fee currently?
It is on the fee schedule. So if you're being fee scheduled, it would be on time. I was trying to. I think it's 55 without. Let me get to it. Probably just went wrong there.
Director Thomas or Director Lashinsky, do you happen to know that special event permit fee is either 50 or 55?
Yeah, it's one of the two. Okay, so with that, then I, I just wanted to say, I mean, I, I could go either way on that. I, I think fine. Including it, I feel like that's, as long as obviously they fill it out and have all their stuff in line, but, you know, having it be inclusive. And I, you know, I struggle a bit with the difference between, you know, having an adult commute rate. I mean, I'd be fine with just one rate overall. But that's just my thoughts on it for now.
Yeah, and you know, again, if we were to include the special events fee, I think I would be, I'm sorry, the, yeah, the, the permit fee, I would be sort of lean toward the higher of the 250 versus the 220 if we were to include that. I think the other, you know, while Captain MacNaplin's, I think question is helps to sort of scope the the question. At the end of the day, there's some sunk costs that are regardless of the number of fields and kinds of staff and review and inspection, so I wouldn't necessarily look to go one way or the other, but again, you know, I think if we were to include both these together, I would, I would be comfortable with the 215.
Well, we have, we have more people. I agree with what Tom personally, I wonder how to say it. He's often, he's part of the section, he's a lot of people. I'm a little bit into thought earlier. If, like, or, I think, uh, I have a problem with it.
Councilmember Apple.
Yeah, I'm a little confused about including the special event permit fee in the the tournament, the new tournament fee with the special event permit, because special event is two, is 150 or 55. But the, but the tournament fee is 250, so would they just pay it different? How would we do include it? The tournament fee in the special event fee if the special event fee is less than the tournament fee. I'm not sure how math could work.
Well, I think what we would do is if we chose 250 to be the fee for the special event application, as well as the cost of running your tournament. That would just be the check they would have to leave. It would be all inclusive now.
I'm kind of weird for second fee.
It's, it's kind of maxed at the waiver and so. Is it 50? Yeah.
And I did want to say before, Director Lashinsky, I actually think this is way too low, based on my experience. Especially with select leagues and tournaments, those tournaments are making money hand over fist. Not just with the tournament fees, but with the swag they sell and the food they sell. And considering that we're in tariff and sharing out with people in and out of our fields, especially those turf fields that are taxed for the year four. I personally, I do struggle with this being so low, considering an individual team probably paying several hundred dollars just to participate in one of these tournaments. Now, a little league where it's a true nonprofit and not there to make money and send people to the major league baseball or other professional sports. Sports areas, I think that when you have a couple of hundred kids on a field, the difference between 250 and 500, where that costs the tournament, these pennies that is made up in the sales of other items through that front of the box today. My, you know, I know that this is not the popular opinion of council and that's fine, but I do want to express my, my personal opinion on this is that this is too low, especially considering most of that, when we do tournaments, it's going to be those businesses that might be listed as nonprofits, that are actually there making a significant amount of money off of the teams. There are already select teams that people pay a significant amount of money to participate in. Director Lashinsky and then Pastor MacNaplin.
So $50 fee, there is some code provisions when you're being that bold enough. One mile over fee waivers through the special activity. But with that said, I think this happens fairly infrequently and it happened once. Blocking out these full facilities is my hope because of the interaction between warmups and people hanging around and you certainly don't want a different random score going on with the game and, and people trying to warm up, like having, you know, been involved in tournaments, right, you, you, you got a pretty good schedule, you got to keep it pretty tight. So it is nice to have the extra space for warmup. That said, if another sport, soccer, lacrosse, participates in needing a field for a part of a tournament. They'll just rent the field on the hourly block they do now and fit in because we are not big enough to host soccer tournament more than lacrosse, right? You, you need three fields minimum and just not conducive to that. So I do think, you know, again, we had a little league once, a work grade. They had the whole thing and we, we actually closed off some of the parking, so the turnaround and other stuff was managed. It was very nice. I would almost like to close an entire little parking lot by that. Daily basis, maybe one of the artists sit there. But yeah, it's, I think the whole thing you get on the time and it worked great last year. The organizer, the whole league great, their liaison was great. We blocked out time for practicing to incur other torts and they were there to do this. Less compensation and more easily managed, which is a hard commitment to take it all.
Councilmember Nattland and then Mayor Pertham Henry.
Yeah, I just, Mayor, your comment about except for local leagues.
Ask them not refer to individuals directly according to.
Okay. Well, I just wanted to say that I agree with that and if you look at Boffel's fee schedule under tournaments, it says except sanctioned leagues. So if it's a, you know, end of season tournament of one of the leagues who's been renting all year, I don't know. That's just an idea that it looks like that's how Boffel does it. And I also want to mention that the 250 is on top of hourly rental for the field the entire time. So it's pretty expensive, the field rental time, plus tournaments have to hire umpires, it's, and refs, depending on the type, it's it's not cheap to put on a tournament, so I, I, I want to be careful about not eliminating Duval as a possible tournament location, because for example, a lot of tournaments have multiple locations. So our field might just be one of, you know, four or five different locations on the east side for a tournament, let's say. And so for them to be paying the field rental plus the tournament field fee, they might be paying that at four different complexes and if they only get one field here in Duval, because we technically only have one turfed baseball field or one turf soft soccer field, I just, I just want to be careful about not making our field rentals too burdensome for a tournament, because I do think there's economic development benefit to having these tournaments here. And like I said, we really only have one field of each type. Grass field, maybe, it just depends on the time of year, if that would be used as well. Anyway, I just want to throw that out there. I, I do want to be careful about not pricing our location out of a possible tournament location.
Mayor Pertham Henry.
Yeah, so hearing comments and just kind of rethinking this a bit in my mind. I know sometimes there's a trick to this legally, but I think we could do this. I mean, can you potentially be at 250 level for tournaments? If they are some sort of nonprofit league or something like that, then maybe we include, you know, their special event permit fee within that. Whether however you call that, but if it is like, I don't know how the different, I don't know a lot about select teams or all of that stuff, but you know, if that would help, but also I feel like that fee is fairly low, so overall you're looking at around $300. And then just confirming too though, that if they want concessions, that's still a separate thing and an additional fee as well, correct? Okay, so yeah, I mean, and, and then lastly, I would just add one comment, which is, I just want to make sure we're made whole. And that, you know, we start at this point, but maybe we track it for a year or so. I don't imagine we're going to be running like 50 tournaments on the fields. But I mean, if we're finding that this takes X number of hours of that time and it's just not quite balancing out. I mean, I know there's an economic development benefit to this too, you know, various people into town, but to make sure that we keep an eye on that and or at least start thinking of what escalator would be each year, bumping it up a tiny bit. So those are my comments.
Director Lashinsky.
So on the fee in totality, example, three fields currently. Let's say this field grid was not elected to be used. They would rent one and two. The hours are going to go from 10 to 10, that's 12. So there are hourly rates, but we wouldn't build the unused field and we wouldn't rent it. Right? So I think some of those fee is for that convenience loss. And again, depending on the size of the tournament and the age of the kids. They may be paying for one field, but we're not going to rent the other two. Now, if we can work out with the, you know, the group that, hey, we're going to be there from two to 10. Do whatever you want between, you know, 8:00 AM and, and one. That's great, we'll work it out, but otherwise, they're going to get it. We're not going to double book things. We're not going to try to do that, but coming back with a summary in a year is not a good deal. It's literally one event. For people to do that.
Thank you. Okay, I think I have what I need on that. So the next is, there is now changes to the weekly rate for our facilities and this is to accommodate summer camps and events that are offered weekly. And we didn't have a way to charge for our weekly rental rate for either this building or the depot building, so I just added that. And then there is a proposed summer camp fee. We do not have a fee for summer camps here in the city. And so proposing, the way you usually do it is a fee split for whatever proceeds that are generated from summer camps, the city would split those proceeds. And so I landed on a proposed 80/20 split with the vendors that offer summer camps here. So vendor split for nearby jurisdictions is anywhere between 70/30 to 90/10. So Boffel, Mercer Island, New Mill Creek are 70/30. Edmonds is 75/25, Newcastle and River are 85/15 and Hemsworth is 90/10. So I just chose 80/20 and kind of somewhere in the middle. So council decision here on the amount of split that you would like for a summer camp.
Mayor Pertham Henry.
I like the 80/20 split just because, you know, it's still relatively new thing that we're starting, so I wouldn't want to go to 70/30, you know. But I think that's a good place to start and if I'm the one that decides to change if you could, I think it's a good starting point.
Any other council feedback on that? I'm seeing shaking heads from Councilmember Ball and Kukel.
Yeah, I'm bummed with it.
So the last on the other city fees is a busker fee. So we got a request for someone who wants to do busking before summer stage. Cities have it. I included Kirkland is the one I could find. Which would be maybe through an annual permit of a hundred dollars for someone who wanted to do busking before some of the city events and identify what events that they wanted to busk for in their annual permit. And so there's a council decision here on if this is something that you're interested in.
Mayor Pertham Henry.
I'll just admit, I had to look it up. Here, I had to look it up and now I know what it is. I think it's perky and fun and just totally Duval. And then when I, at the very, very end, I think it was Kirk, your Kirkland, the Kirkland Hall. Same, yeah. You know, not seeing those kinds of rules, I, I think it made me feel more comfortable with the idea of it too, right? I mean, there's the eye blocking stuff, like, yeah, go for it, whatever you want to do. No, there's rules. So yeah, I'd be fine with something like this, assuming you're putting together, you would put together the policy similar to this, to go along with the annual permit. Yes, yes. So it would just be the permit. We would do, yeah, policy implementation associated with it. I mean, if you've watched Gilmore Girls, that's a good example. And Sharon?
Yeah.
I was going to say, it, it, I think at the same time, you know, the, the quirkiness common, but I, I think beyond that. You know, they're, they're sort of with the rules in place, they've, they've already, for the city, I think, you know, the, the proceeds that the busker will make is actually driven by the quality of the performance, I think they encourage. And it, it even the artistic animation media as well, something innovative to try.
Right, yes. Councilmember.
Always with annual permit and designated parkways, so that would exclude, I'll prove during main street here.
I think we would want to start in parks that have special buildings and then see how it goes. And if you wanted to allow busking on Main Street. I kind of modeled the concept after Kirkland does it, because it was the best example I could find, which seems to be limited, pretty designated.
Any feedback, Councilmember Nattland?
I own, oh, sorry. My only comment would just be similar to how we had, I can't remember which other policy, I think it was the food truck one, where you have an interim policy or at least have a check back in after a year on the busking. I can't remember which other policy. I think it was the food truck one where you have an interim policy or at least have a check back in after a year on the busking. Just to, you know, see how everyone felt about it. Try it for a year and have it come back.
Okay. And then, um, next slide, there's one other piece that was a change, which is, um. So under permit and land use, I made two changes there. One is the special event application fee. The amount of the special event didn't change. I did add language. Uh, to allow for fee waivers on some of the economic development tourism programs on. Said waiver on the special event, um, permit fee. And so I went ahead and just added language there so that if. Council, um, or the city wanted to offer a fee waiver, there was language there to support it. And then the second piece is an annual special event permit, um, which would be new. This would provide a process for an annual special event permit, permit for those like DFA. That want to operate multiple events with food trucks or vendors that don't want to file a special event permit each time. Um, it allows us to waive the fee, so I added the fee waiver language there, but not the permitted. Our insurers and our attorneys require that special event permit be filed. This is a way to lessen the impact on from the organizations that have multiple events with kind of the same structure. So that I'm not having to do it multiple times throughout the year. Um, so it's kind of a new concept, but we hope that it'll meet the needs of some of our, uh, community partners. Um, so that's also the change. And so those are the changes to, uh, these good. Right, Councilmember Supple and then Councilmember Kupel.
Yeah, going back to busting, um, so. What is that to like that? Uh, people, if it's possible for ensuring that the permit was. Employed that the busker was permitted, or would the. Police department, would it be possible to that? How would that work out?
Well, you couldn't busk without the permit.
Well, you could.
You could.
What did you do?
Um, yeah, I don't know what compliance would look like if you were trying. So, um, I think it would, we would have to probably amend. The special event permit routing. This is, so what happens when you file a special event, any organization, is it routed through the city department? And so we talked to the police and say, hey, this is a special event. They were requesting, you know, president for participation and play. Get rid of public work. There probably would be in our routing process. A new checkbox for is there busking for this? We would add it internally so that everybody, you know, in all the departments would see that they're a busking permit for that. On the part, Councilmember Natlin, I just want to also say that, um. After this goes on for a while, um, we can update our code and our policy, um, to require they carry their permit on them. Um, as well have penalties if they don't have a permit. We did that with the no soliciting ordinance. Um, so now if anybody shows up at a door and they don't have a city permit, they can get a pretty significant fine into a criminal penalty. So, um, that's something we haven't, uh, advertised much in the last few years, uh, during and post COVID. But that does exist and so we have things like that in our code currently for. Um, to make sure that people are following, probably would not want to go, no, with doctor. But, um, but we could put policy in place to provide some teeth that have. Uh, Councilmember.
Yeah, I just wanted a double check on the annual special event permit. I saw somewhere and I can't remember where, that it was going to require the, um, event dates in advance when you file. The annual special event permit, but what if the organization doesn't know every single event that they would want to have? I'm just thinking of the one event that I attended, which was. Um, the Cascade Community Theater used the open space, um, the DFA property. I doubt they knew about that a year in advance. Um, so would there be a way to have up to so many events? And maybe require at least a week notice to the city if they wanted to add that date to their. Number of days.
Yeah, we can structure it. I mean, what we don't want is it to be totally unfettered. I mean, we certainly want to make sure that. The insurance is being filed with the special event covers the kinds of events. So when they file the annual. Um. Permit, we certainly want to know. What they're thinking, because different kinds of insurance are gonna. Uh, different levels of insurance would potentially apply to something like Duval Day versus, you know, Community Theater and Park. Um, so I think, you know, we want to at least have an estimation of how many events are planned. And the types of events. I don't know that we require, you know, specificity of the day. Um, Councilmember Kupel, and then I did see our coin can pop up and down till we can get an opportunity.
I just wanted, um, like this would be. Probably something like.
If it was the same organization, maybe, um. But what this is really looking for is, um, for groups that run the same or similar. So if it's, for instance, at a different park, you know, a parade versus a beer garden, we really need separate. Special event permit for those, because the configuration of the event is different. But really this is being mindful of. You know, what DFA particularly is asking for. There might be another organization that. Comes out of the woodwork that is similar. Um, but really it's for. An organization that runs the same type of event at the same property. More than once. Did you have anything, Oscar?
Apologies, I accidentally, uh, raised my hand and didn't mean to. I, I do have some general. Um, concerns about, um, some First Amendment issues on both the solicitation and the. The, 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 the busking. I think it's fine from a legal standpoint to require a busking permit in connection with a special. Um, event, but I think I would want to be able to look at that in a little bit more detail. Um, before we imposed it on a twenty-four seven citywide, um, basis, if that makes, if that makes sense.
Uh, Councilmember Mercer.
And then I, I actually just had a sort of a follow on the special event format. I, I sort of fully understand the structure. And that it could be like, you know, the third Sunday of every month or something sort of repetitive. But do you think there's some value in having a recording requirement to the city, even if there's changes, just so whether it's. Police department awareness that events going on or traffic control or other things. So. Again, I don't think we have to have them commit to the, that the, the date, but I do think there should be some. You know, one week in advance or two weeks in advance, whatever that is, that the city and staff are aware of.
Yeah, I would agree, as long as there's some kind of minimum notice, um, you know, to make sure that we have a chance to process that a little. Time. So otherwise, I, I think this is a good framework to start.
Thank you. Um, and that's it. Thank you, City Minister Jana McNabb. Um, now we're moving on to Agenda Bill twenty-four dash twenty-one. Free group of the free purchase of the third avenue. Over for discussion and decision. Your Lieutenant Jesse, that was a mouthful.
Greetings, Mayor Council, Staff, Citizens, the Atlanta Deputy Albert Burks. In my gross neglect. And, uh. Uh, I apologize that I haven't seen my screen. Share. What, not this? Okay. So in your package, you had a contact blank document, um. We opened this today for the Culver project. The Culver itself is on the fair, I'm sorry, the Co-Clam and Creek Upper Reach on Third Avenue. The, in between Kennedy and Park Street. Um, this is the Culver physical purpose itself. We would then have to go to a construction bid to get someone to install it. Material, uh, the purpose now of purchasing in advance is noted in the action in the agenda item, but it is. Time constraints to get this done in a year. With that said, we were awarded a hundred eighteen thousand from. Can, can put control and now we were just awarded another eight hundred thousand for the Culver from the group. Um. Okay, put control district, just a little bit ahead. Uh, we did subray out the project for expeditions in, in permitting. So we're working on the HPA and then receiving the Jervah and then putting together our bid plan. That would go out in the next. Um, with that said. I'm very sorry. Um, there is one bid submitted. We normally don't like one, but. We just live in the union years of it. So five hundred twenty thousand dollars, two hundred, five hundred twenty, two hundred ninety-five. Dollars, been a beat, beat anything. Um, current review does appear to be responsive. So it could be bad and become a responsible bid. Uh, that does recommend moving forward with it. Based on. Our. Requirements. Uh, we will continue to see funding. We have a couple of brands outstanding that are due soon. Um, and the intent to, once we, assuming this goes through. When we go to constructing, it will be for the second in its totality of improvement or better sidewalk. Any of those appearances widening, et cetera, from Park to Kennedy along Third Avenue. Um. Project estimate of time is three point six five two million. Uh, what that did include was about eight hundred eighty. Plus a fifty percent contingency. In that number, so removing that and then putting in this Culver cost lowers that to three point one five five. We are going to a hundred percent and we'll have a refined, uh, engineer that submit soon. And you can see the numbers on the right, um. The grant itself of the eight hundred thousand dollars is broken into eligibility of construction and materials, not design. Um, we did replan some Arco funds and then we have re, and get pledged to, to get this work done. A little bit of water work for lowering and adjusting the watering. So permitting is ongoing and we expect to receive full core approval in June or July. Uh, right now we're expecting plans this month. We'd be ready to bid in May. The environment is always twenty through thirty-one. That is a clip of the section. Park three on the mark and Kennedy and their side of this image. So we are requesting and recommending the approval of the concrete. Please, preference.
We're not seeing any questions. We have a moment.
Below the responses there, does that also mean that, um, they have a good track record?
Yeah. We, we voted as fast as we could today. We will continue that if something possible, obviously, uh, not move forward. But the intent is to do that every day. And they are reputable. And the concrete manufacturer facility is fairly massive. This will be coming out of Duval as opposed to some of the other people we're eat. Which makes it a little easier. Uh, approximately half in time is on the big deal.
Councilmember Natlin, I'm seeing you have your hand up. Can't see the screen.
I do. Yeah, I would. Can, can you hear me?
Yeah, yes.
So I was just looking at this and, uh, trying to orient myself is. Left north?
No, so this is Park Three. So this, the right side of my screen is. Northern, um. Bottom of the screen is east, if that helps. The creek runs downstream. To the top of the stream.
So the oval block is looking upstream.
Correct.
Okay. Sorry, I was a bit confused by the.
That was an easier way to put it, thank you.
Okay, and then the, so the reason I was asking this question is it looks like on maybe either end to. Uh, get to the sidewalk, you have to cross the street to connect to the existing sidewalk. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so the question I had is, do we have any stubs for potentially a crossing light or something? I don't know how busy Third Avenue will eventually get, but I. I'm somewhat concerned that it could get a lot more busier. Um, as we build out the road and it's more convenient to drive on.
So I think the question was, are we preparing for any, you know, for condo work to bring, you know, crosswalks in the future that are lit? Correct?
Yes.
Uh, I would say no. They're not, we are not, uh, to the right also is a mid-block crosswalk. And, and on the upper side of the screen, if you lap, we're not doing the information outside based on the creek and all of the sensory degrees. And we expect that same element would continue to, if you were to turn wethely on Park Three off of Third. So that existing mid-block crosswalk will be located in that crosswalk to connect to that side mock network. And then the boardwalk itself will be on the east side because of the steep maker on the west side. Um. That's that.
Okay.
Great, any other questions? I'm seeing, oh, your Mayor Henry McHenry. I'm just going to move to a group that I developed. The co-comments over for this unpack to the list responses that are constant for you. Right, any further discussion? Seeing none, quickly please take a roll.
Mayor for Kevin Henry.
Hi.
Um. Mr. Martin, uh, Mr. Supple. Ms. Natlin.
Hi.
Ms. Kupa.
Motion happens, thank you. Uh, moving on to Agenda Bill, uh, twenty-four dash twenty-two transportation benefit district material.
Give me again, thank you, Mr. Council, he wanted to set his own works. This is a very uneventful acting item. And not even having a screen share. So. Laws changed relative to the transportation benefit district. And we are required and have no problem with putting in provisions for contract amended contract hang orders. Once a contract is issued, so if something happens where the thing is twenty percent over, we have to come back. Over open public meeting and then making decisions after the fact. So it is just fulfilling newly changed laws relative to our. Transportation benefit issue.
Are there any questions from council? For council, I think this, oh, Councilmember.
Uh, staff recommends, um, I'm sorry, uh, more than to approve, uh, Agenda Bill. Twenty-four, twenty-two, um, uh. The recommendation, the city council approved the proposed resolution, got the TBD material change policy.
Do you have a second? Great, um, any further discussion? Seeing none, quickly please take the.
Uh, Mayor for Kevin Henry. Mr. Mercer, hi, Mr. Supple, hi, Ms. Natlin.
Hi.
Ms. Kupa.
Uh, motion passes. Moving on to our last item of business. Economic Development Grants for Discussing and our Decision. Uh, so you finish me down.
Hello, good evening, everyone. Um, so I did not create an agenda bill figuring that this would be, um, at least for tonight, a discussion item. Though certainly council could, uh, vote to approve the recommendations of the economic development and tourism subcommittee. In your packet were, um, the applications that we received as well as a chart that I put together of the discussions that were held last week with the subcommittee uh, to propose the amounts awarded. I thought tonight we would just go over what the, um, requested amounts were, but then the, what the, um, amount proposed to be awarded um, from the committee were and then to see if you had any questions. If there are any requested changes, I would make those and then bring them to, um, the consent agenda at the next meeting. Uh, so based on the chart that I put together, I'll just kind of run through them. Um, certainly council member Natalie, mayor for Tim, if you want to add, uh, anything that you think that I lost in the conversation, um, please do. Uh, so the first, uh, application that we received, and I just say first because it's not, I don't know what we received first. Um, was from the Chamber of Commerce. This is for the art and wine walk. Um, the northwest, um, the N, the NWAC, which is the kind of the volunteer um, arm of the chamber for the art wine walk, they requested fifteen thousand dollars. The request was for a professional coordinator to do the art wine walk um, for off-duty police officers, permit insurance and supplies. The subcommittee, um, proposed two thousand dollars plus fee waivers. Um, we can't waive the insurance requirement. We can't pay for the insurance requirements. Um, but we could certainly, you know, waive the fee for the special event permit. Um, so in the subcommittee review notes, I listed that the special event permit would still be needed. That has to have insurance. Um, the subcommittee offered that this money would be intended for a one-time investment startup cost to get the program reinvigorated. Um, additionally, fifteen thousand dollars for a four-hour event seemed excessive given the funding and the city invested thirty thousand things like which is, you know, approximately thirty thousand dollars for multiple multi-hour events. Um, council committee would like the chamber board to vote to approve the money to ensure that the chamber will fund raise or see sponsors at the home to hold the event prior to. Um, was there anything that, you know, that, you know, may a potential or council member, Natalie, you can miss.
Councilmember Natalie.
Yeah, the one thing on this one, I'm, I'm super excited about this event, but I think the one thing that weighed in on how I felt about how much the city should be contributing is there is a revenue, um, component of charging for tickets for this event specifically. So there is a revenue component that can help fund the event. Um, I think you can walk through and see the art without paying, but the event is the art and wine walk. Many people come and buy tickets. You get wine or at each location. So that, um, weighed in on how I felt about how much the city should be contributing.
Mayor for Kevin Henry and then councilmember Puka.
Yeah, I was going to add as well, I, I think that's something councilmember Shaker brought up in the cities, um, things besides wine and spirits, you know, other things, uh, we do have a distillery and, and other brewery and all that. So I, I think that's, it's usually just the catchy way it's worded, right? Art and wine walk, but it feels or something, but I think it was just feeling a bit of, um, impact potential. You know, there's a lot of businesses that I think would come in on this and really support it. So, um, maybe it's a great event and you want to see it get going again. Just felt like this was no more appropriate funding level to get it going and to be self-sufficient in the future.
And I too agree with that, that, um, how much they've been raised for, um, I think it's been happening. I think they have.
Great, uh, councilmember Thistle.
Yeah, the proposed amount is, um, low, very low compared to relative to the other amount being awarded to the other, um, grant applications. I don't think two thousand dollars is going to go there far, especially when they're starting up after what it's been three years now since we've had a heart and line on here. And, um, in my conversation, this takes more than just a couple thousand to get the program off the ground. I mean, this might be appropriate in the years ahead, but for the first year after reinstituting the, the, uh, art and wine walk, I think this is extremely low.
Did the committee or, um, pretty staff ask, uh, inquire driving process all the time it's off? They were put on previously. Uh, we did not ask what the last time it was held was in two thousand and nineteen, but the city did not. Mayor for Tim, can I answer your question as well? Um, we did talk about, um, I do think it was primarily volunteer run before. There was a conversation about how they, you know, that, that maybe this particular group doesn't have the bandwidth, um, to do it the, the same way. And so there's been a change in how they would do it if they could do it this year. And I think to compare it to some of the other, uh, requests, other requests were very specific with line item, uh, like this piece of equipment or one-time type things as were this was primarily for a consultant to plan and run it all. And so the concern is that that would continue each year. If you don't, if we haven't found the right group that has the bandwidth to run it as more of a, um, um, cost efficient event, I think that was some of the concern the committee had as well. But like a lot of enthusiasm and wanting the event to come back, but hoping to find the right, um, group with volunteers that have the bandwidth to take it on. And I do think there's a lot of business owners that have really jumped in and helped with it too, so.
Uh, councilmember.
Yeah, sort of just around that. I, I don't know that two thousand is the right amount, you know, without sort of understanding the, the cost of the coordinator and the work that would be done. Um, it may be too low. I definitely think the fifteen thousand is too high. Um, that said, I do, you know, if we could come up with a provision with some, uh, you know, weather matching, I, I think there is benefit to, to Mayor for Tim's point around, um, from a sustaining, uh, component, having skin in the game and then sort of demonstrating to that. But, you know, whether it could be structured in a way that it could be more than two thousand contingent on matching funds or something that sort of provide a little more leeway without sort of opening up the, the piggy bank, you know, in terms of, because I agree there are, um, across the, the downtown, there are different benefits, uh, businesses that would benefit at different percentages based on, on the, the particular businesses that are participating. But also sort of the general benefit that's in town. So, um, I do think the chamber has the, the, the muscle to, to raise funds and they demonstrated that. But, but maybe, you know, there was some wiggle room in terms of that final number based on, you know, some type of matching stuff that was put in place for the cap that would incentivize them to, to sort of demonstrate that provision.
Um, so what I can do with this is kind of take a, um, because we have to reconvene to economic development committee group, um, to, uh, it'll come to me. There was a reason I had a reason for me.
Oh, yeah.
That's something else earlier than meeting. Um, so we can talk about that based on feedback that we received tonight and revisit the amount here.
Beneficial.
Beneficial, thank you. Thank you. Uh, so, um, good, I think that's enough feedback that I can bring back to that meeting.
Can I ask one quick question?
Yes, please go ahead.
What is the budget for these grants? The overall budget?
The overall budget is fifteen thousand dollars, but understanding that, for instance, the budget poll or, um, the benefits came in high. And there are also two other projects where we did not receive an application, but we are considering using for economic development and tourism grant money. One of which is collaboration with Ospo Farm. And the other is, um, potentially using the money for the mural. Um, so generally there is a range of money. Um, so the second one is Stone Valley Hill. They, uh, put the ten thousand six hundred and seventy-seven dollars. Um, theirs was really specific. They had, um, again, uh, in the packet or all the applications. Um, their concept is to do a long-term passport program throughout the valley. So their requested amount included, uh, graphic design and printing mail distribution. Uh, approximately thirty-seven hundred for a program coordinator, building a website and, um, with these um, for this farm development passport program. Um, the subcommittee is recommending four thousand dollars to see the, and to invest in the concept predicated on an event being planned in Duvalle and that is intended to support a Duvalle farm or business, recognizing that this concept for Stone Valley Hill is from, is for the entire St. Pauli Valley. Very few farms are actually located in the city of Duvalle. We want to make sure that, um, the, the agricultural businesses here in Duvalle and the farm businesses, um, have some benefit here. Love the idea. I just want to make sure that some of the, um, some of the, um, investment use for, um, happens in Duvalle, so four thousand dollars with the hope that Stone Valley Hill would go to carnation, go to St. Pauli and ask them to join this program. Questions on that one?
What's Amber Puka?
Snow Valley Hill that covered all the way down to, um, North Bend, right?
Yeah. And a couple of our farms, like Ospo, for instance, is, um, participates in it. Ospos is in the city on it. So we just want to make sure that, you know, that the concept, um, ends up supporting. And then next is Duvalde's. They made a request for fifteen thousand dollars, a very specific request for music and audio support to bring in additional music and stages to Duvalde's. Um, the recommended award is five thousand dollars. It's a one-time start of classes for extended music and festival, but not to cover all of it. Duvalde has, um, uh, they have their own fundraising, um, organization within Duvalde's.
Question go around.
Okay, uh, Duvalde Farmers Market requests sixty-nine twenty, um, direct and then five twenty-five in kind, which are uh, waiver of, um, better special event permit fees. So there's, um, there were questions for this, for about no equipment buying and state canopy, musician funds and then waiver of, um, permit fees. Um, so, uh, the council subcommittee, uh, is approving their requests as, as requested, recommending approval. But, uh, it's predicated on the, the sustained electrical infrastructure tailor's on and support. They do struggle down the farmers market with, um, the electrical infrastructure. Um, we have invested thirty thousand dollars in bringing electricity down to the, or budget right now to bring more electricity down there. With the concepts that they have, bringing music has to be supported.
Councilmember Thistle.
Electrical infrastructure won't support, but they have a plan for that.
Um, I don't know. So they have requested more electricity. Um, prior to getting this grant request, they have suggested that the infrastructure is not going to support their needs. Then we got the grant request and so, um, most of their ground is for things that require electricity. And so we need to know whether or not it can be done with the infrastructure that we have.
So they need to be not in this morning.
Correct.
Mayor for Tim Henry. And one of the specific items they requested was a low noise generator. So I mean, they're at least saying something, but yeah, I, I, that's, I think, I feel like each of the requests have some follow-up questions to make sure. So it's not like moving forward would just be writing an immediate check. But, um, yeah, I mean, again, this is like one-time type things. They're trying to expand it and get it to be more of an attraction than it already is. But I think that's important for them to figure out some of the things, like you mentioned, string like, you never know what was going on.
Well, and this is an important, um, reminder that these are invoice-based grant. So if we don't cut a check to just say, use it if you can, it's, um, we will reimburse or reimburseable grant. So if it can't be done, then we would just redeploy the resources to, um, you know, another project that needs the requirements of the economic development tourism grant. Uh, so the next one was Duvalde Foundation for the Arts, um, five thousand dollars for Sambla after four. The council, uh, some campaigns recommending granting that amount. And that's for equipment rentals, um, for performances and tables and chairs. Um, council would, would like to make a strong suggestion to, um, the group that's doing Sambla's best support for that money on Duvalde. And the city will waive the banner fees. You know, one of the goals of this whole grant firm is really around marketing. And that, um, we want to support marketing these events that we would put in, um, or put on into Duvalle. We want to make sure that, and the new contract requires a marketing plan be attached to the contract that we enter into with the city, um, that is, but we really do want to make a focus on that the message of these events are being augmented so that we can bring more people to them.
Councilmember Thistle.
I thought I remember seeing you there for, for, uh, you know, you.
No, they're not requesting. We're just saying we would like some of the money of the five thousand dollars to go to augmenting the message. Whether that's a banner, it's kind of predicated on having a different banner pool on Big Rock. And now we've seen the, the Big Rock cost for banner pools. Yeah, a part of it was their request mostly was centered around extra rentals, like chairs, tables, things like that. Um, anticipating the festival growing this year, but then they didn't really discuss the marketing side of how like, just like the natural growth. But so we were just kind of making this suggestion, um, uh, to hope that they would maybe look at marketing as well to draw even more crowds to make sure that those extra seats and tables get used. That's how that came up in our grammar's issue. I would just note too that, um, banners are based on first principles, but isn't it hard if they voted? So if, um, the committee is going to make that part of a grant agreement, they need to make sure that they get an application in very early. Otherwise they will be pushed out by summer stage in other, um, city related events. So, uh, that's something to keep in mind is that if, if they were encouraged to spend money on a banner, they went and spent money on a banner and were not to get it across the main street, that would be a big issue.
Great, councilmember Puka.
Who'd like to point out, getting that will be the first thing. And to Duvalde.
Yeah.
So that might not be a good baseline.
But I think that's a point we'll make, yeah. Uh, and then finally, the Monroe YCA, uh, made a request for fifteen thousand dollars, very nonspecific. Um, largely in support of their summer camp. Um, and so kind of predicated on the fee schedule happening, um, or the fee schedule being approved that has a fee related to summer camp. Um, and legally rentals of facilities with the subcommittee thought we could do is, uh, waive the rental fees for, um, the, the depot building, which is where the summer camp will be held. And then the, um, our pot share for the summer camp fees, um, with the expectation that Duvalde. And so what I'll do is I'll reconvene the group and, um, make any adjustments, but I will bring these forward um, to the next consent agenda. Um, with changes, you, and if a council member wants to pull it up, we'll. Um, any other questions, Bones?
Excellent, well, thank you. Uh, that concludes, uh, our agenda. So unless there are objections, uh, we've also canceled the agenda at eight twenty-one PM. Thank you all. Thank you all.